Good evening. Welcome to Tupelo City Council Meeting of February the 6th, 2018. We'll have our invocation tonight by Councilman Buddy Palmer and our pledge of allegiance by Councilman Mike Bryan. If you'll please rise.
At this time, I'd like to call on our neighborhood coordinator, Mr. Marcus Garrett, to come lead us in our invocation.
With all his bow, all eyes closed, we come to you once again, Father, to thank you for another day. We want to thank you for the council members. We want to thank you for our mayor and all of the city leaders. We want to ask that you place your hand on this council for guidance that will mend the city in a creative, beneficial way for our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. President, we have Girl Scout Troop 20130 is going to lead us in the pledge tonight. Would y'all all step up? That's good. That's good.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask Vice President Travis Beard to confirm or amend the agenda and the agenda order.
I move to confirm the agenda and the agenda order.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Beard and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan. All in favor? Agenda set. We'll move to proclamation and recognition reports agenda, 4.1 recognition of Boy and Girl Scouts. Mayor?
Thank you, President Winten. As you saw, we had an outstanding group of young ladies that led what may be the best pledge that we've had here ever at Tupelo City Council Chambers. Ladies, I think I've got everyone's name. If you'll, as Councilman Bryan said, this is Girl Scout Troop 20130. The leader is Anita Ambrose. And ladies, if you will, when I call your name, please stand up. Pearson Gambrell. Treasure Miongo. Mason Daniel. Raleigh Dos. Nala Cunningham. Carrington McMillan. Brianna Shelley. Diamond Sherry? Sherry? I can't read my own writing. Aubrey Washington. Jamila Hurd. Harmony Hadley. Shaylen Martin. Ever miss anyone?
Let them turn around so they-
Okay, can you, ladies, turn around, please?
... get their faces on the camera.
Thank you for coming. We'll move to 4.2 recognition of city employees.
There are none. We'll reschedule the one that was supposed to be here to another date.
We'll move to 4.3 recognition of major thoroughfare committee members, Hudson Bryan, Ken Burton, and Kay Trout.
Thank you, President Winten. If I could have Councilman Lynn Bryan and Mr. Greg Perkel, please, to join me. While they're making their way out of the room, I just would, joined here by Councilman Lynn Bryan and the chairman of the Major Thoroughfare Committee, Mr. Greg Perkel. For those that may not be aware, the Major Thoroughfare Program that was enacted by the council and mayor in the early 1990s has just been a resounding success for the city of Tupelo. Self-imposed tax that has invested around $120 million into the infrastructure of our city, led by community or citizen volunteers, that have truly just changed the face of the city and made us a driving force for economic development, residential, commercial development, and then just the quality of life of being able to get around town easier. So, we've got three recognitions tonight. I thought, and you'll see the similarity in the names, I thought maybe start with Councilman Lynn Bryan, if he'll recognize. Mr. Hudson Bryan, will you please come forward?
Thanks for 15 years.
At this time, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, and Mr. Bryan said the same thing, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, it's my honor to present to you, Ms. Kay Trout, this plaque in appreciation and thanks for over 22 years of service on the Major Thoroughfare Committee for the city of Tupelo. Thank you, Ms. Trout. Mr. Ken Burton, and I think he's got some special folks with him. Do you, can we?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's all of my grandchildren, and my wife.
Can y'all come up with us?
Come on. They're not back from the other times.
This time, on behalf of the city of Tupelo, it's my honor to present to Mr. Ken Burton this plaque in appreciation and thanks for over 15 years of service on the Major Thoroughfare Committee for the city of Tupelo. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
I do want to express my appreciation to these members. They've been serving for a long time, and it has really been a pleasure to serve with them and to see their dedication, to see their service. They've gone above and beyond. I know they've been at subcommittee meetings on the telephone when they've been in Texas. I know they've talked to citizens and convinced them that this is the right thing to do, donations of land, and they've put a lot of hard work and hours into it. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your service, and thank you, Greg, for your service as well. We'll move to 4.4 public recognitions. Let's start with Mr. Jennings.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize a couple peoples tonight. My friend, Ms. Gwen Pratt. I put her on the spot, her husband and I, and her husband and brother, we were classmates in Calhoun County, so I just want to recognize her today. And also, my pastor, he's on the thoroughfare, and I recognize him today. Raise your hand, stand up. He's serving on the Major Thoroughfare Program, so thank him. I thank him. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Danny Riley is a good friend of mine. He also serves on our Major Thoroughfare Committee.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, I've got three, I see three members from Hill Place back here. I hope I don't forget anybody. I think that's all but Chris Van Horn, Tammy Dos, and Terry Stewart. If you guys would wave to everybody, thank y'all for being here. You want to stand? I used to could make Tammy stand. I can't do it anymore.
Ms. Davis?
I have two announcements that mention, and one of them, I would like to mention that the Alcorn State National Alumni Association will be having their midwinter conference in Tupelo from the 22nd through the 25th of February. And they will be having a lot of activities. Their colors are purple and gold, and you'll see them all over the city during that week. And on the 24th, we will be having a parade, and the Alcorn State Sound of Dynamite Band will be in a parade downtown Tupelo at 12 o'clock on the 24th. And I think this is the first time, we call it the SWAC, but this is the first time a SWAC band has ever been to Tupelo, other than, I think, Mississippi Valley came and Wes Will sponsored them, and he been out at Tupelo High School. But I would like to invite you to come and stand on the side of the road and see the parade and give them accolades for their outstanding band, and we're going to have some other local bands participating with them. So, please come out and view this band, because you just get a treat of your life to see this band. Another thing I'd like to do is, in that it's Black History Month, I would like to just recognize all of the African-American leaders and trailblazers in this community, as well as good luck to the many activities that will be going on during the month of February, and you'll receive a treat if you attend some of these activities. So, good luck for Black History Month.
Mr. Bryan?
The, I can't emphasize enough the importance of the Major Thoroughfare Committee. Since its inception, over $120 million in infrastructure are basically all of the roads that make you get from one place to the other without being stuck in traffic, any worse than it is, but all because of Major Thoroughfare. Cooley Road, Cliff Gookin, Easton Boulevard, the Northern Loop, North Gloucester, it's just all over town. And Hudson, Kay, and Ken have served a number of years on these committees, and you just don't understand, without being there, some of the things they do, getting people to donate acres of land at no cost to make it go. So, can you imagine going to something, somebody, and say, "We want you to give up a several-hundred-thousand-dollar asset," and convince them to do it at no cost to the city, for the good of the city? And they've done things like that, and because of that, we're where we are now. It is the envy of the state. So, you go to any MML meeting, meet with anybody else, they ask what you can do, and one thing you say is Major Thoroughfare Program. They had never heard of it, and when you tell them what it is, they just can't believe that they can't do it, but they can't pull it off. So, y'all need to be proud of yourselves, and everybody that serves on the committee needs to be proud of themselves.
Thank you.
I have one other thing I failed to mention. I'd like to just, I'd like to give accolades to all the people that serve on the Thoroughfare Committee, but one of my, one of the members of people that live in my community, I just wanted to recognize her, because I believe she's been on the Thoroughfare Committee ever since I've been on the council. Ms. Trout, I just want to congratulate her for the work she's done on there, and she's one of the faithful members of Ward Four.
Thank you. 4.5 mayor's report. You can state your name and address. You have five minutes.
I won't even take that. I know most of everybody, the council's going to have to hear me talk for way too long on Thursday, so I'll be very brief today. I wanted to recognize for purpose of the minutes and congratulate Ms. Josephina Rayburn on being named Citizen of the Year at this year's Charity Ball by the Junior Auxiliary. And then, because I know the council loves hearing me talk for extended periods of time, I want to remind everyone that the State of the City is this Thursday, February 8th at 3:00 p.m. It will be held, as usual, at the Bancorp South Conference Center. That will conclude my report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll close the regular meeting. Open up the public agenda. Public agenda, 5.1, public hearings. 5.1A, public hearings regarding the planning committee's request to rezone parcel number 087S-26-035-08, located on Easton Boulevard. Is there anyone here to speak to that? If not, we'll move to 5.2, citizens' hearings. There's no items tonight. We'll close the public agenda and open up the regular session. Six, the action agenda, 6.1, review, adopt, reject amendment to ordinance to rezone parcel number 087S-26-035-08, located on Easton Boulevard. This item was moved up January the 18th. Second. Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. Is there any questions or discussion? We had a work session on this, and this is agricultural land that will be rezoned for commercial development. All in favor? Move to 6.2, review, approve, reject TA 17-02A amendments to the Development Code, Congrat Living Provision. This was originally tabled on December the 5th, 2017. I move to take this item off the table. Second. Have a motion by Councilman Mike Bryan and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer to take it off the table. All in favor? Now, I'll entertain a motion for 6.2, review, approve, reject TA 17-02A amendments to Development Code, Congrat Living Provision. Mr. President, I move to delete this item. Second. Have a motion by Councilman Mike Bryan and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings to delete the item. All in favor? We'll move to the routine agenda. 7.1, review, approve, reject minutes of the January 18th, 2018 regular city council meeting. Second. Have a motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan and a second by Councilwoman Eddie Davis. All in favor? 7.2, review, approve, reject advertising and promotional expense list.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we review and approve and reject advertised promotion expense list. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Willie Jennings to approve the list, second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Tonight, we're approving Lee County Courier for $300 for the State of the City address, Daily Journal, $760 for the State of the City address. Get a lot of press, Mayor. Lee County Courier for water light, hot water heater ad, and then the church sponsor and the Journal of Homes. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.3, review and pay bills. Make a motion.
I move that we pay the bills.
Second. Have a motion by Councilwoman Eddie Davis and a second by Councilman Beard, and tonight we had, bills were paid by myself, Buddy Palmer, Travis Beard, under the supervision of Mrs. Shelton and Johnny Timmons. Have, all in favor? Bills are paid. 7.4, review, approve, and ratify reject continuing disclosure engagement letter agreement and exhibit A thereto.
I move to approve this disclosure engagement letter.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings. Kim, are you?
This is an annual request that we ask of you to approve Butler Snow to compile our continuing disclosure. We're required by MIA, which is a regulatory body of municipal securities, and we're required to have this continuing disclosure prepared by the 31st of March each year. And since Butler Snow served as bond counsel on all of our outstanding issues right now, it only makes sense that they would be able to compile these rather quickly and economically.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
7.5, review, accept, reject minutes of the December 18th, 2017 Tupelo Coliseum Commission Meeting.
I move that we accept these minutes.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilwoman Davis. Any questions or comments? All in favor? 7.6, review, accept, reject appointments to the Major Thoroughfare Oversight Committee.
We'll accept these appointments to the Major Thoroughfare Committee.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Mike Bryan. Mayor?
I'm sorry. I think they'd do a great job, and I would appreciate you confirming them at this time, that Scott Davis, that is an at-large nomination. He's an attorney here in the city of Tupelo, been a resident of Tupelo for 25 years, a member of the Orchard Church, from Ole Miss friends. He's got two degrees from the University of Mississippi. Ms. Charlotte Lowden is also an at-large member, do want to mention, was nominated, or requested to be nominated by Councilman Lynn Bryan. Her husband's a firefighter, or maybe retired firefighter with Tupelo Fire Department. They're business owners here in the city of Tupelo. She's a nurse at the North Mississippi Medical Center in the radiology department. I think both would do an outstanding job on the Major Thoroughfare Committee. That does leave one additional opening, I think, that is a ward appointment that we're waiting on and will submit in the near future.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? 7.7, review, accept, reject, reappointment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
I move that we would accept the reappointment of Dr. Louis Britton to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Second. Have a motion by Councilwoman Eddie Davis and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings. Mayor?
This is, as stated, Dr. Louis Britton, he is a reappointment there. This is a mayor's appointment for that committee, not a restaurant or hotel. He's served, been an outstanding member of the committee over the last several years, and I think will continue to do so, and just for purposes of diversity, or just to mention for the minutes. He is the CBB Board's only African-American member at this time.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.8, review, accept, reject, request from Hill Place residents to be recognized as a neighborhood, as a neighborhood association.
I move that we accept the request for Hill Place to be recognized as a neighborhood association.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Lynn Bryan, excuse me, Mike Bryan. Bryan boys. Shane?
It's my pleasure to present to the council a letter on behalf of the Hill Place Neighborhood Association, and in part, it reads, "Our purpose is to foster a closer unity within, keep residents informed, and promote a safe and attractive neighborhood." And those are obviously very great attributes that they're trying to reach, and I would highly support, or I would greatly support, the council looking on this favorably. We encourage citizens to be part of the process, and this neighborhood association will move this neighborhood forward, and I think our own Councilman Travis Beard, as well as our fire chief, are actually part of this neighborhood. So, we'd appreciate favorable consideration.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to also mention that that neighborhood is shared actually by Mr. Jennings and myself. It's two different wards, but all in the same neighborhood association, so both Mr. Jennings and myself are willing to work together to make it a beautiful neighborhood to live in, raise your family.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? 7.9, review, award, reject bid, $14.98 PW for the sale of a Kubota tractor, serial number 1, excuse me, 51012. Second. Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Chuck?
This is a request to sell one of our tractors, or actually, two of our tractors to the highest bidder, which was Chisau Equipment. We had four bidders that responded, and they was the highest with $42,000 per tractor. So, please ask that y'all award this, please.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.10, review, award, reject bid, 1498 PW for the sale of a Kubota tractor, serial number 50523, and I think you heard his explanation. Have a motion? Second. Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Any questions or comments? All in favor? 7.11, review, approve, reject, Major Jackie Clayton's continental travel to attend the 2018 FIBNAA National Training Conference in Quebec, Canada, and approve, reject a daily per diem rate of $132 for the conference.
I move that we would accept, approve of the travel and the per diem.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Eddie Davis and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings. Barker, are you?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Actually, that is FBI, and it's the, Major Clayton is a graduate of the FBI National Academy, and this is a national convention, usually being held within the states this year. They're holding this national convention in Quebec, Canada, this year, and he's requesting to travel outside the country to attend that conference.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
If I may, Mr. President, I would just add to that. This is not a new or additional budget item. This comes out of the regular travel budget for the police department. Just the regulations, rightfully so, require that any international travel be approved in advance.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.12, review, approve, reject Tupelo Police Department's request to authorize a change order to install a GSA Class 5 rated vault door for the narcotics evidence vault.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like for us to table this and have more discussion with the architect on this matter for the next meeting.
Is a motion to table? Is there a second? Yes. Having no second, we'll go back to review, approve, reject Tupelo Police Department's request to authorize a change order to install GSA Class 5 rated vault door for the narcotics evidence vault.
I move that we would approve this request.
Second. Have a motion by Councilwoman Eddie Davis and a second by Councilman Travis Beard to approve. Is there any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I'd like to have a few comments. You know, I brought it up in the work session yesterday, is trying to be more accountability on my part of taxpayers' money. I know mistakes are made, we all make some, but in this case, the city and the taxpayers, and we are responsible for taxpayers' dollars. And when it's a question in Mark, I think we- And when it's a question in Mark, I think we should, in this case, at least talk to, I know we have, I think, Dunn and some of the other department heads have talked to the architect. But I think they should be sitting down in front of us and have discussion and explain to us. Because I feel like they owe us explanation. This is almost a $30,000 something that was a mistake made, and I know that the department, the police department needs this change. But if they intend to continue to do business with Tupelo, I think they owe us explanation themselves and tell us why they can't be responsible for paying for this, or at least part of it, or something. Because I'm telling them now, if they come before me again with an architect deal, my answer probably won't be as good as the last one they got for me. If they're not willing to come before me at this one, it's showing good faith. And I don't think that's asking too much, because taxpayers hold us responsible on who take care of their money. This is their money and my money. And I think any business, do business with the city of Tupelo, it should be gracious enough to do that on our request, and that's what I will request.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, this change order is for $29,427, and it's my understanding that the check was made out for $44,000. Can you explain, or can someone explain the difference of 29 to 44?
Kim or Bart?
It was on the FBI.
The invoice has 44,000. There was a small amount left, less than 5% of the contract was left before the door was introduced that needed to be changed. So we had not completely paid out the original $8,900,000 contract yet. So you're seeing a balance of that original contract plus a change order of 29,000.
Okay, thank you. So the difference was the between 29,000 and that was?
Was the remaining payout.
Give me your question.
Yes, I somewhat agree with Willie a little bit. I do think, but apparently, there were some mistakes made on both parts, and it was explained to me. I think that we can all learn from this, and perhaps this won't happen again. We do have procedures we need to go through. I think that we probably missed one or two of these, but I'm willing to go ahead and support this. It's already been done, everything's been done, but it may be just a little point that we need to be a little more careful about some of these. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to make a comment that when we were working on the Tupelo Administration Bill, and it was just a whole lot of stuff that we had to do and deal with, I thought we would never get through the part of actually building the building. And so I do say that maybe we need to be cautious, but sometime, there are things we are not aware of, and I feel like we need to support this because it's a requirement, and if we don't approve it, then we won't be approved as a narcotics, well, department to efficiently handle the business in that department. So I strongly support this, and, you know, mistakes are always made, but I feel like this was something that maybe, maybe the chief or whoever, whomever was not knowledgeable. So I strongly support us approving it.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I may, two points, and Councilwoman Davis essentially just made the first one. You know, for whatever reason, the wrong door was installed originally, but we don't really have a choice from a police department perspective or a crime lab perspective but to have the right door installed. If we don't meet the criteria to introduce evidence into court, then every criminal that gets charged is going to walk free because we can't introduce evidence. So I understand fully the sentiment that a mistake may have been made, and we shouldn't do that, but not correcting it isn't a viable option. We've got to prosecute criminals, and we need to put people that need to be in jail in jail. As to the potential error, regardless of whose fault it may be, Mr. Lewis, at the council's request, has contacted JBHM to see about what may be done, you know, to look at that fee. So pursuant to the council's instructions yesterday, we have done that. And as far as being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, that's something that everybody in this room takes very, very seriously. I would like to, just by way of reminder, though, remind that the council had approved $12 million for this project. The administration self-imposed a cap of $10 million for the project, and Chief Gary and the architects came in $250,000 under budget. So, you know, we fully understand that we need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars and that we need to do everything appropriately and follow the procedures. We're certainly looking into that, but we have to have the right door to be certified to introduce evidence into court to convict the bad guys, and we just have to do that.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I want to clarify some. Every time I make a statement, somebody always trying to undermine me. I want to clarify what I mean. I'm going to prove this. I know what, I know we need the door. I know we need the right type of door. That doesn't have anything to do with my request. Architects should have the courage enough to come in on our request. I'm an accident, I'm still an accident. I want to continue to do business with them, but I can't continue to do business with them if they can't come and sit down in front of me. I'm not going to go run to them and hunt them down. Yes, I know what we need, I can understand all of that, but it still says, I'm still going to stand by what I said. I'm going to prove it, because it's already been installed. We corrected the mistake, but that still doesn't answer my satisfaction of the architect. They need, if I got a question and I feel like they need an answer, then they need to come to me. I can only speak for me. So if I can't get that request, then I don't know what my answer will be the next time they come before me. I don't think, as a councilman, asking too much for that, is to answer that question, because we need an answer, we need it from them. Can you at least consider paying half of it or something, or say we sorry that we made this mistake? Because we paid them approximately $700,000 to do this, and then you tell me you can't come before me? I can't speak for nobody else, but I can speak for myself. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, could you arrange that meeting during the work session with JBHM?
If the council so wishes.
I think, to Mr. Jennings' point, I think it would be good to ask them the questions. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? 7.13, review, approve, reject request to allow officers to wear uniforms and to have the proper city-issued equipment to help with security and deterrent at the Bancorp South Arena. So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Bart, you want to?
Thank you. This is the police department's being able to work security for the Coliseum, and so we are submitting these names for you to approve if and when they're called upon to work the Coliseum in full uniform with police-issued equipment. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.14, review, approve, reject request to surplus Sergeant Samuel Lee Miller's duty weapon, a Glock Model 17, 9mm, serial number TEB-912, for a total of $1, to be returned, to be turned over to him on his retirement from the city of Tupelo Police Department. So move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mike Bryan and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. This is common practice on retiring policemen to sell them their duty weapon for $1. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.15, review, approve, reject Tupelo Police Department's surplus item list to sell at auction. So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Willie Jennings and a second by Councilman Travis Beard, and I think the police department are going to surplus a 1995 Ford Taurus, a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria, a mobile camper, command post, and a travel trailer. Again, this is common practice to auction these off at the highest price. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.16, review, approve, reject list of items to be declared surplus to sell at auction or scrapped. This is from the Parking Reg Department.
I move that we would review and approve the list of items to be declared surplus.
Second. Have a motion by Councilwoman Eddie Davis and a second by Buddy Palmer. This is, again, a common practice to auction these items off after we declare them surplus and or scrap them, and I assume the scrapping would be just to dispose of that, Alex. Okay? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.17, review, approve, reject list of items to be declared surplus and sold through the city auction. This is from the Water and Light Department. So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Travis Beard and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. And again, this is a list of items from the Water and Light Department to be surplus. Any questions or comments? All in favor? 7.18, review, approve, reject transfer of water and light collections to bad debt pile. So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan and a second by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Can you surplus this and auction it off?
Now, this is a routine item, the requirement of TVA auditors that we retire this debt every so often. This period was from July 2016 through December of 2016. And again, always remember, we retire this debt, but we also keep a data bank of all these people, and we still try to collect as they come forward.
Is this lower than it was the last time?
Yes, sir, it is, and it continues that way. I mean, we're talking on $40 million worth of revenue, so.
Any questions or comments?
Johnny, how long does it stay on file, this particular list? Once a person's name gets on there, is it still indefinite?
Yes, sir, indefinitely. And a lot of times, they will show back, sometimes three, and four, and five years down the road to reapply for service and we collect.
Y'all still communicating with Tom Bigby if they go to?
Yes, sir.
If they go?
We communicate back and forth.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.19, review, ratify, reject public relations contract between the Tupelo Convention Visitors Bureau and the Turner Company. This was originally approved December 19. So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Mike Bryan and a second by Councilwoman Eddie Davis. This is the ratification of the contract between Turner and the Convention and Visitors Bureau that we had a work session on back in December. Neil, do you want to share anything else with that?
Thank you. This is just ratifying a contract that was approved. This is a budgeted item in the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.20, review, ratify, reject the First Amendment to Land Exchange Agreement dated December 29, 2017. So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan and a second by Councilman Travis Beard. Mr. Logan?
That is just to ratify the amendment that we approved on January 18 that adds the lease to the purchase agreement for the Lanier Building.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item 7.21, review, ratify, reject real estate option agreement between the city of Tupelo and Hancock Estates LLC. So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan and a second by Councilwoman Eddie Davis.
Councilman Whittington, both items 7.21 and 7.22 are both contract requests for, are both requests to ratify contracts previously approved by the council, and these are real estate options.
Any questions or comments for Shane? All in favor? Item 7.22, review, ratify, reject real estate option agreement between the city of Tupelo and Britton Jones.
I move to ratify this real estate option.
Second. Have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilman Travis Beard. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? We'll move to the study agenda. Item 8.1, review, discuss ordinance amending Section 7-14 of the Tupelo Code of Ordinances Regarding License Commission. Move it up.
Move it up.
Item would be moved up. 8.2, review, discuss response to the Public Transit Request for Proposals, Climb Up Incorporated.
Move it up.
This item would be moved up. Move to 9, executive session. Do I hear a motion? We determine the need for executive session.
Second.
So move. Ben?
President Whittington, we have the transactional business in discussion regarding respective purchase of some properties, also some certain pieces of properties, I think, that, and those are appropriate items for executive session. I think we need Mayor Ms. Taubner, Ms. Bringleyburg, Ms. Hannah, and Mr. Hooper.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis, of course, wherever he is.
I hear a motion that we go into executive session. So move. Have a motion by Councilman Buddy Palmer and a second by Councilman Willie Jennings. All in favor? Thank you for coming. The council is now in executive session. The, uh, council is now in executive session.
HealthWorks explains the science behind health, and when you can see children understanding the science behind something, that light bulb goes off, you realize that what you're teaching, they're understanding, and that's what makes the difference. When that parent or grandparent comes up to you after the class and says, "I learned something today. I needed to be here today to hear this lesson or to hear this, this message. This is great."
We have seven or eight behaviors in this country that drive 30 or 40% of our total healthcare costs, and they're all behaviors that are preventable, and we don't have any primary prevention strategy to address those behaviors. And HealthWorks is a primary prevention strategy. I think that's vitally important. So, I've lived in a lot of places, and, uh, I've never lived in a place like this where the community came together over an idea and then made it happen.
My dad was on the first trip to South Bend, uh, when the whole idea of something like this coming to Tupelo, and when he came back saying, you know, "We could do something like that, we could even do something better than that." Personally, when I was, uh, uh, mayor, we used HealthWorks, uh, when we applied for the healthiest city in Mississippi. Then we went to All-American City in Kansas City, and we used HealthWorks as part of our application. We became an All-American City again. It's been really important to me to see its success and how many children we've been able to help get it started on the right way. So, if our community is going to be successful in addressing those issues, uh, HealthWorks needs to stay healthy.
HealthWorks is the absolute inspiration for the work that I'm doing for my career. And I describe them as a public health organization that actually meets the needs of their community. And that means that they don't just listen to what they should be doing, as public health would tell them, they actually listen to the community and listen to what their needs are and meet those needs at the root cause and to give the community what it's looking for.
The connection with HealthWorks has been very important to us over the years. HealthWorks does have data that the programs are working through their pre-and post surveys. They can show that our students have gained knowledge through the activities that they have participated in. As an administrator responsible for K-12 students, um, HealthWorks is very beneficial in offering, um, different programs to meet the various different competencies that we're required to teach in our health curriculum.
I have been using HealthWorks, um, almost since the day that they started. I have seen them, um, add to our community in many ways. I've seen it with my children and my students because it provides for them a place where they can learn about being healthy, um, they can learn about their body, they can learn about science, and it's in a fun way where they don't even know they're learning about science. HealthWorks is a place to where the whole child is taught. It provides kinesthetic learning, it provides auditory, visual learning, so children with any learning style can benefit from it, and they don't feel excluded. They get a full-rounded educational experience.
You know, we say in the classroom at schools that, uh, you know, learning can be fun. Well, here, learning is fun every day, and it's so exciting to see that. We get a lot of feedback from, from teachers that we're doing works because you just, not only do you see it in the kids' eyes, but you see it in the, in the teacher's eyes also and see them nodding and smiling like, "Hey, we're all getting this together. This is what I did in the classroom, and thank goodness."
HealthWorks is great at educating children in a non-traditional way. I think that is the very best thing that HealthWorks does. Um, we actually get the children up and they're moving about, they're doing a lot of physical activity, there's dancing involved, so things that you don't normally get to do in the classroom, you can do them here at HealthWorks. I love to see the children learning, I love to see the moment when the light bulb goes off, but at HealthWorks, we get it. It's teaching children how to advocate for their own health, it's teaching children how to have a healthy lifestyle.
And you could tell that a lot of smart people came together to talk about what is it that we want to accomplish here? And so, and everything seems very intentional, very well-planned, there's a lot of detail that has been attended to, think that, you know, you, you are able to reach the entire community, so not only the children, but their parents. And so, in the same way, when the children are here learning, the parents are picking up as well, by having programs on the weekends, programs at night, uh, programs that are aimed at different age groups. We're, we're very specific here, and I think that's, that's really special, to, to see that kind of dedication instead of like, "Well, here this, here's this really pretty building, we'll do some nice things, come if you can." Now, it, it's really integrated, I think, into the fabric of Tupelo life. I love the innovation, I love the dedication to excellence that we see in here. Our children deserve a place like that.
We are going to have to call on the community to continue to support it in, in an order to sustain the programs and the facility, and it's just an expensive operation, but when you think that we are in one of the poorest states with the poorest statistics about health and wellness in the nation, how can we not support this? How can we not attempt to make this something that will change health outcomes in our, among our population? And, you know, Tupelo has a history of stepping up, rising to the occasion, and they certainly did that with HealthWorks. The people who, it was a community-based effort. It was more than just a few large donors giving to HealthWorks. This was supported across the board at so many giving levels. That will enable us to continue to provide the programs that we have now, expand on those programs, and expand them to other areas in the state. To have a facility like HealthWorks in a community with a population of 36,000, as Tupelo does, it's, is really a gift to the community. To be able to have our children, our schoolchildren, exposed to learning in a fun, stimulating way as they are here, and learning things that change the, that will improve their quality of life for generations is really an, an enormous benefit to this community.